It is 7:01 PM on Monday, March 4th, 2019, and this is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have Board members Paula Cole, Peter Tensing, John Ashmead, Christine Malik, Tim Paulus, and I am Crystal Brackey. We also have Superintendent Yunowski at the table, and we may be joined shortly by one or both of our student board members, Diego Luis Nikio and Nyseer Folsen. So if you see two young men, come join us at the table, that is who they are. We certainly, as always, will strive to remain centered and focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement that we inspire and empower each individual to learn, grow, and excel as we conduct our business this evening. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
I will move the agenda as presented. Thank you.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye and the agenda is approved. So we are moving into the Information and Proposals, Non-Actions Items section of the agenda, and I first want to acknowledge that our typical school presentation that takes place in the first meeting of the month has been postponed to the second meeting in March, I believe, both because of a conflict in Principal Daniels' schedule and also the sheer number of things that we have asked the high school to prepare as part of their presentation. So we will be hearing from Richfield High School at our next meeting, which is on March 18th. With that, we move into the superintendent update where you have an update about your goals at the midway point for the year, and then also a chance for us to review Vision Card C for the first time.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we'll start with our quarterly superintendent goals update, and it's part of the transparency of the board, the process requires, and I participate in sharing out updates on goals. We have some areas where we're just repeating data, so we'll skim through those relatively quickly, and then we also have areas where we have new data. And so the goal is just to formatively take a look at how things are going and just keep our eyes on things as we move forward. Just as a reminder, similar to how our teachers are evaluated, student achievement comprises 35% of the overall performance evaluation process. Then there are process goals, which is those strategic plan strategies and activities that we work on for our entire district, and then also the overall board evaluation of the superintendent, which happens in June and July. As some of those achievement goals, as a reminder, we're looking to increase our graduation by 3%, but also close the gap between our highest and lowest groups and have that disaggregated. As a reminder, our overall was 80.9%, so we're looking at that grad rate goal to jump up to 83.9. We have yet to receive our graduation data from the state, but we anticipate it coming in the next month or so as the state comes up with that this spring. We are also looking to close gaps specifically between Latino and white students, black and white students, and special ed and non-special ed students. So those are our areas of focus within graduation rate. Achievement goal in regard to early childhood, the TS goal, we're looking for proficiency of 85% higher for our students as they exit pre-K. Entry upon pre-K, we're looking at 48.8% proficient in literacy, 29.1% proficient in math. We'll be taking this assessment coming up in April and May, and so in my next update, I'll be able to talk about the progress being made by our pre-K students. Then we have achievement in regard to both math and in regard to reading. We'll start with math, again, looking for growth of 3% or more, and then also a closing of the gap between our highest and lowest students. So we're looking for a jump from 39.9 up to 42.9, and then closing gaps specifically between Latino and white students, black and white students, ELL and non-ELL students, and special ed and non-special ed students. It's also important to note that we were looking at a growth measure in regard to how this is going from the NWEA MAP, which is a formative assessment taken during the year, and looking to grow from 38.7 up to at least 41.7. So we're looking at multiple data points, both MCA and in MAP. And then from a reading perspective, and similarly, again, we take those later on this spring, moving for all students from 41 to up to 44 to closing gaps between Latino and white students, black and white students, ELL and non-ELL students, and special ed and non-special ed students. And similarly, an area where our MAP scores came down a little bit lower, looking for that gain of three from 34.7 to 37.7, and that growth measure with regard to the MAP. And then we're also looking to continue improving our culture and climate, where we do have some data to update at this point, and looking at a decrease in suspendable incidences of 10% or higher across the district, where we're looking for that culture and climate work to grow, with closing the gap also between our highest and lowest incident groups. Important to note that last year, overall, over the course of the year, we had 491 suspendable incidences. This year, we have 147 at this time, so we're looking quite significantly improved, possibly a cut somewhere in the half range. Also, we are looking to cut that gap between Latino and white incidences and also black and white incidences, and just looking at having incidences be representative of what our population across the school. And so we're looking to also have, in addition to overall reduction, gap reduction for our students. So those would be our achievement-based goals. Moving on to some of the things that we're doing in terms of process goals. And again, process goals are the things that we are trying to do to accomplish some of the goals specific to student achievement. So this year, as a reminder, we launched our K-5 literacy curriculum, and we've been launching new curriculum in 612 Math, and we continue on to move that forward. One of the things the board has been asking for is not just the implementation, but also surveys to determine how did that implementation go. Our teaching and learning team followed up on that, launched implementation surveys with all of our staff to see how was that, and to help us learn from the implementation and rollout of both literacy and math, to make sure that we're capitalizing on our successes and also looking at areas where they would like us to improve and making sure that we do things at a high-quality level as opposed to just making sure that we are doing those. We want to measure that specifically. We are launching Vision Cards with the board, and so Vision Cards are a new way for us to look at a scorecard, for a lack of a better way of describing it, to a way to look at our measures across not just student achievement, but looking at our four strategic plan strategies, really looking at our culture and climate, looking at our academic achievement, looking at our marketing and communication, and then looking at our business finance and operations. As you probably remember, we have presented Vision Card B in the fall, looking at our communication and marketing, implemented Vision Card D, which is about finance and operations. Tonight, you will be seeing Vision Card C in the presentation right after this, and so I won't go into that too much in depth, but that's about our culture, climate, and our social-emotional work. And then later this spring, we'll be working on Vision Card and presenting A, which is our teaching and learning and our academic work. The board has asked for us to continue leading and expanding input participation groups, including Reimagine Richfield, with site events at each of our schools, and also we added high school improvement presentations to the board and to the community. We've launched the superintendent strategic advisory this year and are launching and have been leading the extracurricular advisory to really make sure that we're taking voice from all of our constituent groups. Then, we are leading those social-emotional supports. We did talk a little bit about the data, but we also have a Safe and Supportive Schools Group, and they continue to meet. They're actually meeting in addition to May 14th, they're meeting later this month to continue talking about things like our discipline policies and how are we doing in regard to social-emotional work in our buildings. We're looking at our supports in each building that we launched out with a social worker now in every building and social-emotional supports for staff, to support staff in every building, and also help with our students. And then also system alignment, to make sure that all of our staff are trained in innocent classroom, envoy, and additional other supports. Similarly, we're looking at the implementation effectiveness, looking at ways to improve, and looking at how can we make sure that all the things that we are working on are successful beyond just implementation fails. Then, we're looking at overseeing the planning and start of our capital facility work, so that project oversight committee that Board Member Ashmead is on meets every other Wednesday. We do have links to our websites. Information updates we're also sharing on social media. You might have recently noticed, the RDLS update has been launched on social media, and so you can see that virtual walkthrough, similar to what we had done at the high school. Currently, the district office is in process of packing, getting ready to move over to the central building, where we will begin work on our high school coming up very soon, and then start STEM RDLS in late spring. Then, we have looked at how do we mentor, support, and coach all of the strong staff that we have. So we've overhauled our Q-COPE program to move from just doing evaluations to doing some additional coaching, mentoring, and support, and then also improved our employee assistant program, providing some telephone supports and some additional supports to staff, and really working to overhaul to make sure that we have all those possible supports, making sure that those are supporting staff who are in need. Similarly, as you'll notice, at the bottom of each of these, we have done surveys or in process of surveys, which will allow me to report some of that qualitative data as we move forward and how we're doing that. Then, we're also looking to expand and increase our equity work. We obviously expanded our teachers of color, adding a significant number between this year and from last year. We will have completed our all-staff initial training in innocent classroom. We have several schools closing up and finishing up their work this year on March 8th, our next professional development day this week, and some will be finishing up at the very end of the year over the summer. We also have been doing additional trainings with the Humanity Center. We've been doing Beyond Diversity through Pacific Education Group and our WEMAP partnership, and we're also looking at some work with Courageous Leadership through Makedo State, continuing to expand through all those possible options for equity work for our teachers and our leaders. The operations team has led some customer service improvements and customer service and communications training, working with our bus drivers, working with our secretaries, working with those first contacts for many of the folk who interact with our school district. And so we're working on that. We did launch our district-wide survey to see what our data looks like. We'll have some initial results in regard to the Vision Card, but we're beginning to work and tally some of that data, so the spring report on our survey will be able to come back to the overall, back to the board later this spring. And similarly, in relation to my overall performance, looking at how that looks in regard to that survey from this spring. Again, we closed that up just a couple of weeks ago, and so we do anticipate a report overall in the next couple of weeks or in the next couple of months, and we'll be able to finalize that in relation to my evaluation. We looked at market share as we were looking at where we are in enrollment. We took a peek at that in December. And enrollment applications, we're looking at gathering that as a new data point, and so we're planning to have a baseline, we'll have that very soon, and a new data point for us to see how are we doing from an application compared to residence. And a lot of this communication, we've been working on through social media, jumping from 398 up to 1,326 followers on Facebook, going up to 243 followers on Twitter and 428 on Instagram. So we're really seeing some very significant jumps in our social media presence. Similarly, we're looking at quality improvements of our teachers. Again, something that we have done a survey, we'll be looking at results to come as our Q-COPE team finalizes their work, both teachers' evaluation of staff training, but then also our HR teams, reporting back along with Q-COPE, teacher and staff evaluation data overall in terms of how are we doing in improving our instructional staff. So with that, a lot of information, there are a lot of data points that are coming, but that's part of what occurs when we do those mid-year check-ins, and just also reporting back on the processes that we have put in place because some of the surveys and the implementation surveys are new based on that board feedback from this past year. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
There's a lot of information in a very short amount of time. Thank you. Questions or comments?
I have a really detailed question that's in the weeds on how we will be calculating the, so of the, in the suspension of suspendable incidents goal. Our intention is to break that out, does that agree with that, by the subcategories? And so my question is, how do we intend to sort of calculate what is our expected, so how we can sort of define what that gap is, so we're obviously being able to set what an expected rate is for a given subcategory as opposed to the actual rate and then measure what that gap is? So I'm curious how that calculation would be?
So there's a couple of ways of looking at it. So the first piece is, as we've launched our social-emotional supports, we intend to, and we've really proactively targeted student behavior, trying to de-escalate things before they happen. We will, we anticipate seeing a large reduction in overall suspendable incidences.
Yes.
So from there, we are then using that data to target areas that we are seeing trouble spots, so to speak, and so we're using that to do additional focus. Beyond there, then, we are also doing a demographic breakdown of our suspendable incidences and suspensions, and we would be looking at that data in the larger picture compared to our overall population, the percentage of population, what is the percentage of suspendable incidences and how do those match? Is there misrepresentations or over-representations of certain groups within there, and what types of things can we do? Mary has a couple of...
So, yeah, more detail on the trouble spots?
Yes.
And then may I have another question? Go ahead.
Well, and I'm wondering if you ought to wait until it comes out in the Vision Card because that is one of the critical areas. But we are looking at it proportionate to the students that are, that have participated in suspendable incidents. So what we would think is that it would be proportional to the demographics of the district. So we will have a breakout, and when there is, when we tend to suspend more students of a particular demographic and less of, so one of the things we know is that we tend, that our data shows that we suspend less white students in proportion to our black students. And so what we would hope is that there isn't that.
Right.
So you'll have, I mean, we can get that data for you. It's not, so I don't know that.
Yep, yep, yep. And then, so here's my question, and this is really kind of a math-based, this question. So I know that our demographic mix varies by building, and I am assuming that our rates of suspension also vary by building in terms of sort of the overall rate. So what I'm going to suggest is that when we do that correction for what would be sort of the expected rate for a particular racial subgroup, that we do that by building so that we don't inadvertently confound the rate, if we have a higher-than-expected rate, for instance, in the high school, and the high school also is higher-than-expected, let's just say hypothetically, African-American, that could confound the district-wide rate if that's sort of playing through. So that's just sort of a math piece.
So just, so all of that information is broken out also on a monthly basis?
Yeah.
Communicated to buildings? So we can talk offline as to, if you want. We report overall, but we can't...
Yes, and so I think it's fine to report overall, I just, the head of the place wants to when we sum up and calculate what our expected rate would be on a district-wide basis, to calculate it first by building and then sum those to get the rate.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so that, so that we're not applying an expected rate for the whole population that may not apply.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And we moved it?
Yep.
Thanks.
I have a number of questions as well on the goals. With respect to the goals on literacy and math proficiency, we also have a process goal of implementing the new curriculum in literacy and math. Can you just talk to how, you know, how we go about trying to improve while simultaneously introducing new curriculum, and are those two things at odds with each other? Is there a potential slide in the implementation year?
So generally, there is. According to research, there is often an implementation date, and so what that means is, is that when you implement a new curriculum, sometimes achievement is stagnant or even goes backwards as our teachers are learning how to utilize the curriculum most effectively. I'm welcoming Dr. Rovey to assist with this particular answer.
So to your point, yes, there oftentimes is a little bit of a slide as teachers are learning to become proficient in delivery of curriculum, and we've been very strategic as we laid out our plan, specifically related to how we onboard our teachers. So they were initially trained this past August over two days, and then strategically throughout the school year, we've had checkpoints to kind of gauge where their needs are and where they need more support, and also differentiating the support. This last professional development day, we differentiated the support based on feedback that teachers gave, whether they needed it specifically with content, whether they needed it with more planning, and we'll be doing that again on March 8th, this coming Friday. And again, it's based on what teachers, as they are experiencing the curriculum and they dig into it, then they have a better idea of kind of where their own gaps are in their learning, and we try to support that. In addition to that, we've asked, have given teachers feedback, or excuse me, teachers have given us feedback through surveys as well as through our coaches having informal sessions in smaller groups in their PLCs to ask what's needed, what are the next steps, and we have a plan going forward next year so as they have a year under their belt with this particular literacy curriculum, that will be able to fine-tune the areas where teachers are needing additional support to improve instructional practices.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question before you continue? Do we have information or insights from these first several months to give us a sense of whether we should be anticipating that dip, you know, based on interim assessments, just, you know, teachers being able to gauge how students are doing with the new curriculum?
And so the units of study, they do an assessment, and they have, you know, the rubric of what they should be expected to learn, and they do an assessment at the end of the unit, and so that does help kind of gauge what students have mastered, what areas, what do we need additional support in. In addition to that, through PLCs, we've been having conversations with teachers about, you know, now that you have the curriculum, now that you've had your hands on it, what things do you need more of, and what we're discovering, they need more time just to do some planning and talking among degree-level teams and trying to also accommodate that.
I guess I'm trying to, do we have a sense whether or not proficiency is expected to go down based on the initial signs? I'm just, I'm trying to...
No, not based on just the person, because the, no. To answer your question, no.
Thank you. Good.
Well, thanks. Moving to something different, as I went through the scorecards that are listed within here, Scorecard B, the stakeholders reported, we were a low score on, reporting that we're promoted positively, parents reporting that they'd recommend was lower than we would want. Scorecard C, the lowest scores were on, parents reporting something that we would consider positive, and they're low. And then we get to Scorecard D, which is that we've aligned all our resources to maximize goals, and we're off the charts really good. And so there seems to be a disconnect here if the parents and the stakeholders are not able to report back something positive. Is it feasible at all that we are aligning our resources to the right things? Or is there a lag? I mean, we have, we have a big communications improvement this year, and we have, and so is there a lag in when the survey, or the information that fit these scores came out was before the new and improved communication and promotion? Or thresholds, because it's jumping ahead to your next topic that we haven't covered yet, but within, within the Scorecard C, it appears as though like the threshold to be at level one is that, you know, we're just below 80% of people reporting a favorable view, and that has us, again, this one, two, three, four, five thing isn't necessarily scaled well in some regard, and so we're just short of 80%, and I don't know how to take that. Does that, do other public schools report this? And I'm going to guess they don't. Like, if we, you have three-quarters of your people reporting something favorable and positive, but it looks not good as we reported as a one on the scale of five.
So, and I'll talk a little bit about what I'm going to talk about next, and I'll skip this part when I talk about Vision Cards. So as a reminder, Vision Cards are our brand-new way of trying to report across our strategic plan how we are doing overall. This is our first time through with it, and what is an inexact science is how we weight the responses, whether we, where we put it on the chart of a one, two, or five, and how do we score that? We agreed in advance what baseline mid-range would be and what those scores would be, and this is our first time through, and so we're experiencing it at for the first time. So is it possible that we are off? We're assuming that we're off on some stuff. As we work our way through the Vision Cards, we'll continue to take feedback from board members. We will look at the end of the process after we have gone through our first run through a Vision Card A. We'll make all those revisions and bring those back together, and then we'll do some revisions prior to next year. So there are definitely areas where we are scored at a five, let's say, that might be lower. There are definitely areas that are at a one that might be higher because it is, it's sort of an inexact science that we're trying to see, where do we think best guess we should be, and then create our ranking based on that. As you mentioned it, there is one other component that is important. As you remember, Vision Card B, we presented back, I believe, in September, and so that was based on last year's survey data. For Vision Card C, we did gather the couple of data points from this year's survey data, and so we're beginning to, as we get that new data, we're putting things in, and so there are two different data sets that we're using, and as we continue to update, we'll update with new data as we have.
So if I look at the scores I cited that are lower than what we would want, if we are in fact successful with the socio-emotional supports, I'm sorry, social-emotional supports and the promotion and the marketing, theoretically, those should rise, right? People would report back that they have a positive feeling, that they feel we're marketing properly, they feel like they're heard, supported from the schools, that their students are heard. Right. So I guess I'll just have to wait for the lag in reporting.
Yes, so one would assume that that will happen as we continue on with our surveys, if we are doing our job with marketing and communication and our job within schools. And then the other question is, is 80% or being that cut score to be above one, is that appropriate, or should it be 75, or should it be 70? There is an inexact science to this, and so we do want to set high targets for ourselves, and we as an administration and leadership team, we're more comfortable seeing those high scores than think that we were possibly inflated.
And I do believe that there's potentially space for a little bit of a dialogue around some guidance for the administration on kind of, not the numbers to set, but sort of the principles that we should be aiming for, because, Tim, what I'm sort of interpreting you saying is that when you see this arrow at the bottom, you know, and far in that red zone, that it means bad performance. And it sounds like, Steve, what you're saying is, the way that that goal was set, at least for this program, it means less-than-desired performance, where we're having this sort of aspirational piece. So I guess the question that I would ask of my colleagues is, to what extent do we set those high bars that we maybe don't even expect to achieve, but those aspirational bars and have it be, you know, so if we're picking it off the charts at the five, do we want that to be a truly aspirational level of success, knowing that we're going to maybe be seeing this little Vision Card hovering around a two or three commonly, but saying, okay, that doesn't necessarily represent failure, that represents that we have work to do.
Adequacy with work to do or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, does that, does that fit with your...
No, it does, right. I mean, it's the harshness of the scales, like one doesn't necessarily remain, you know, it's not as continuous a scale as you would want, right? Like, it's, you know, if it was a binary scale, it's zero or one.
Right.
And zero sounds awful, but maybe you just missed it if you've got a more refined scale. That's right.
I do think, though, that if you think of the results in Vision Card C, regarding parents' view of things, it relates directly with Vision Card B on parents' reporting and retention. So whichever measure is showing that if we are not doing a good job at engaging our families and ensuring that they know what's going on and that they're happy with what, you know, their students are doing and the teachers are doing and everyone's, when then they're really not going to stay, which then shows into our, you know, retention and how parents are likely to recommend RPS and just retention and involvement. And I think, and I see it, that we do, we have done a good job at allocating resources in technology as in the next Vision Card, but this is a real problem, and I don't, I like to know what we're going to do about that. Because I do feel that, from what I hear, there's a lot of black and white feeling about the school, it's, you know, lower and hated, but what is it that is, what's happening that is making families feel that they cannot recommend the school, or that their children should not stay for another year, or that the transition to another building is not being as positive?
And I would say, to build on that, and I agree with everything that you said, that's where I worry, the once-a-year really large survey is potentially not helping us get information in real time that we can respond, and that then we actually have a chance to hear again in the same school year about, you know, are we resolving and responding to things effectively? And so I think that there's both an issue potentially of timing for when this one really large survey happens, because it's going out essentially halfway through the school year, maybe a little bit further into the school year than halfway, but pretty close. But then we don't actually get a chance to do what I would call pulse checks with that same... checks with that same population of people again until one whole year later. And I guess that concerns me because we're missing the opportunities to do some of the things that Paula is raising. And just to be able to have more frequent contact and communication with our families and community. So that's something that's on my mind, maybe because my organization is making a move to do some of those quicker pulse checks throughout the year, so that you don't just wait for that one opportunity to hear from people everything all at once.
I do want to say that I think we want to be very conscious of the potential downside of over, over surveying.
Absolutely.
So of going, going to our constituents too often and, you know, keep going there and asking the questions. And so we may get some fatigue.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be surprised if we got some fatigue among, among our families if we're surveying them constantly. So I think we gotta be careful on that. My, my personal recommendation, I hear what you're saying, Crystal, would be that that operational piece probably happens, you know, that happens at a more of a micro level.
Yeah.
And so, and so we, this is like a formative assessment versus a summative assessment, right?
Yes.
This, this is kind of that summative assessment, but the formation should be hopefully happening all along.
It should.
Yeah.
I think, I'm raising the question about the timing of the summative.
Yeah.
When is the big year end, sort of, you know, formal, most formal survey that takes place? But I think the, the sort of pulse check that I was referring to isn't the same full survey. It's like five questions or six questions.
And I would even say that I don't even want a survey to be, because surveys also have a problem that the parents more likely to take the time to figure out, and those who actually have something to complain about, or to, maybe they have, they feel they haven't been able to express, you know, whatever their thing was known. But I think that as building leaders, we know what's going on and who are those families that are reaching out, who are those students that may be, you know, those relationships. So it may not be so formal as a survey, but those are the things that from a customer service point of view, we need to be addressing so that those families actually get to stay. The service, you know, any type of thing that you do for data connection is going to have a, a, you know, flow and comes, but, but this is a pattern that we have seen. And I, I just really like to see what we, I want to do, to see something really meaningful. And I think a lot as a parent in the school, by end is important, like to feel that something that I've said, I know we've done a lot of things where families have said, well, it's great the students are good, but why are parents not invited? The concern about transitioning from one program to the other is not the first time I hear about that. You know, so communication from, especially being families with middle school families. And so, so this is a real concern.
And I think in addition to the sort of timing and risk of over surveying and whatever the mechanism should be, I think it's also what are we doing to follow up and let people know what we are hearing and how we are responding? And I think that is often such an important part of people feeling like, am I just screaming into the void? Or am I being heard? And how are people making sense of what families and community members are sharing? Tim, I know you had a bunch of questions, and I feel like we went very much off on tangent for one of them.
No, no, I think, I think we addressed them, you know, a lot, like the, the, the gap in, in when the data, you know, the information was acquired that fed the survey. I had a question about that. We, we addressed that. I agree with Paul, with, with the idea that we should follow up. And like, we need to know the, the people, we need to find the people who are unhappy in real time so we can, so we can remedy it instead of letting them, instead of, instead of letting it fester until the, the one mega survey at the year end where they go, zero, and we move on, right? And we don't necessarily know who they are. I mean, we might, we have guesses as to who some of them are, but that clearly there's, there must be enough people harboring these, these, these less than satisfied views. And, and much better if we can find, if we can foster a way to hear about it and address it. And, and, you know, we also have to be, be aware that we, we aren't actually able to make everyone happy.
Right.
For better or worse. So, sure. But no, I, I think we've addressed most of it.
But I think your real time comment to me is the key operational comment. And that, that mean, that, that's a diffuse effort. That's, you know, that's everybody pulling together. That's not something that's, that is your office. That's, yeah.
We are about to move into vision card C, where we will go even deeper into some of these. I know we've been talking about some of these issues, but are there other questions or comments just about this update on the superintendent's goals before we go there? And before we transition, I think it would be helpful just to share when we do anticipate having the next conversation. And if the next conversation is when we will have the full and complete data for the year.
Next conversation about my goals?
Yes.
Is at the end of the school year.
So that is the-
However, survey wise, we typically are able to present that about a month after. And so I would anticipate that after the break in April. I'm not sure if it'd be the first or the second meeting. I know Mr. Kling was working on some of that today, making sure that we were updated for vision cards, but also prepping for other work with that data. And so we'll be using that for management team improvements over the next month. We should be able to bring that back in working.
Yep. I think those are two important and distinct, but overlapping topics, which is why I wanted to make sure that we have clarity on when we're going to come back to both of them.
Absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead, with more on vision card C.
All right. So specifically on vision card C, which is about our third strategy or strategy C, quite a welcoming, healthy, supportive, safe, and caring environment. And just as a reminder, these are really developed via public accountability systems. They focus on our top priorities and really, it's a way of reporting our strategic plan strategies and how are we doing with our goals, actions, and activities. As a reminder, there are four of them. Vision card B, which we started in the fall, we will positively promote Richfield Public Schools, followed up by D, we will acquire and align human, financial, operational, and technology resources to maximize organizational goals. Tonight, we're going to talk about C, we'll provide a welcoming, healthy, supportive, safe, and caring environment. And then our final vision card will come in a couple of months. We'll provide challenging, relevant, and engaging educational opportunities for all students that will increase learning. Once we've gone through that cycle once, and we have feedback on each of them from the board, we will begin doing some revisions of those prior to beginning a cycle again for next year. So again, there's that cycle with tonight, talking about C, and just reminding that these are not finals. So we're doing our best. As Mr. Tensing said, these are aspirational goals. And also to follow up to Mr. Paulus, we aren't sure exactly about how we set those targets, if they are perfect at this time, but obviously know that they will need some revision and editing as we go forward. All right. So vision card C, which is relatively hard to see up there because there are quite a few data points. I'm going to start at the top, top left. Total number of disciplinary incidences resulting in suspension. So this is data taken from the end of January. And so we are looking at a very significant reduction at this time in those types of incidences, rated at a level 4.1. But we absolutely noticed some very significant disproportional data. So in regard to suspensions are proportional to the student population served. We have a lot of work to do in that area. And that's something that we are focusing on as we keep having that data. It's also focused on some of the work that we're doing in partnership with Department of Human Rights and those other 43 districts as we collaborate on one of the best practices of serving all of our students most effectively. Similarly, total number of office intervention consequences with disciplinary referrals. And so these are things that are lesser than suspendable incidences, but also things we don't want to have missed academic time. Also seeing a significant drop down to a level 3.0, right in that mid-range. And disciplinary referrals, similar to above, our proportions just aren't where we want them. So we really need to continue on with our engagement work and our social emotional work to make sure that we are connecting to all students. Number of students reporting bullying and harassment, and number of bullying and harassment proportional populations. We're calling that one in progress. We don't have that data point at this time. And so we're looking to launch a student survey, a specific survey of all of our students, which we were looking to do this spring. However, there were some concerns with the overabundance of testing. And so we're going to be looking at having a data point for that in the fall, as we really begin to gather, gather information on all of our students. We did get some data back, sort of fast track for this particular work. We had set out that number of 80% for our level one, trying to go up to 100% at level five. So number of parents supporting a positive transition for their child. That was in the high 70s and something we want to continue working on. Parents reporting they can discuss feelings with administration. Again, something in the high 70s that we wanted to work on. That was however proportional, showing that some of our work with parents and reaching out to a wide range of families, isn't specifically race dependent based on our data, but overall an area for us to work on. Number of parents reporting they can discuss feelings with their teacher, and that was at a level 3.0, in that range that is what we've considered 3.0 as a baseline, and something we'll continue to work on. And then, also proportional to the population. And so we're also seeing that as an area of strength, is our work with parents and the adults. And then finally, number of parents reporting they can discuss feelings with support staff. And again, finding that third data point that was something for us to work on. So again, our overall work of parents across, but that isn't necessarily predictable by race. And so we are seeing a level 3.8 in regard to that being proportional for student population.
Can I interject one quick?
Yep. And that's more of a pause, because the others are B and D, and I'm not planning to go through those. Those are just in there as reminders.
I was just, because it is very difficult to see on the screen and you're referencing the scores, I just wanted to point out for people in the audience or people watching later on YouTube, that in the board packet, there are the very specific questions and the current data for the district. So if you want to see more about how this is measured and what our current outcomes are, it is available in the board packet in a much more legible format.
So I'm scrolling so you can see each of the questions, total number of disciplinary results in suspension. You'll see we've said level one, level of suspensions is greater than 20% of the population. If we were at vision, we would be no more than 2% of the population. And so we are at 3.5%. So we're in that, in that range. And so each of them have a spreadsheet of data to follow up. It shows each of those pieces we've been working on. Okay. So with that, again, I'm not going through B and D. Those are just in there for reference. I will open things up for more questions or comments.
I can start with that overarching comment that I shared with the superintendent before the meeting. Actually, two things. I think one is, just as I was preparing for this, it's difficult to see when data is as of and what the data source is. And so if there is a way, as we are continuing to refine these vision cards, to have something that helps us identify the source and the date, so that we have some context around when this information was taken and where it was pulled from, I think would be helpful for us and for others who are trying to make meaning of this. And then I think the second thing is, you know, my gut reaction when I look at this and see the areas where the odometer is in the red, is obviously really concerning. It, it makes me want to know, what are we going to do about this? And I'm also trying to remind myself that at this point, these are still somewhat arbitrary ranges that we have set for ourselves. So I, I just sort of want to acknowledge that for me, both of those things are true right now. Feeling concerned about the places where we're falling short of where we want to be, and acknowledging we are in the process of doing this for the first time. And even just putting it on the paper and on the screen like this, I think, is an important step forward.
So I think if we take out numbers for a moment, because numbers and red versus green can create some feelings of anxiety.
Yes.
I think if we think about a safe, healthy environment, and we think about the areas that we know we need to improve. We have talked as a leadership team and as a board that we need to improve in our communication and marketing. We've talked about we need to improve our customer service. We have talked about we need to improve our overall retention of students and retention of families. As we look at the data points, we know that areas that are ending up lower are areas we have identified for focus. So when you look at my goals and the things that we are trying to do to improve as a district, just going back to the presentation previously, training all of our staff in innocent classrooms to engage in students and families more effectively, training all of our first responders in customer service to do some of that work more effectively, hiring a brand new marketing manager for this year to help us market and communicate more effectively, and continuing to do presentations like this that are more transparent and continuing with ongoing communications. Those are all areas that we are proactively addressing, those things that we are reporting out that are definitely in those areas of focus that we need to keep working on. And so ones versus fives aside, we know that these are areas of focus. We have strategies to continue to try to improve. And so whether the specific level of ranking is accurate or not, as you point out, we certainly know that the areas of focus that are being identified and that we're talking about in our vision card are areas that we need to continue focusing on. And back to our financial area, as we think about that is something that we are seeing with much higher scores. As a district with a bond rating that has increased, as a district that has reduced their class sizes, as a district that has become more long-term, fiscally stable, those are areas that obviously we are performing at a higher level at. And we have some objective data to show where some of this particular data actually trails what we'd like to see. So we'll continue to focus in these areas. I think we have.
Okay. We, we covered it all kind of in our first conversation. Okay. I, we have one more idea to add.
Perfect. So speaking of finances, Mr. Holgy is going to be stepping up and talking briefly. As you remember, as we've continued becoming more and more transparent with our overall financial picture, we receive monthly or every other month, updates on where are we and proportion financially to where we would anticipate being. So in your board packet, you have that update. Mr. Holgy?
Yep. And this is something, as Steve was saying, we have been talking about just a couple of highlights or kind of pieces of information. So revenue, we're working harder to make sure that we're booking revenue more currently when we have that available. So you'll see that there's some trends where that's higher than what it's been in the previous year. It really is kind of that timing around the documentation record keeping around that. In essence, when we look at expenditures, and this is really kind of the driving factor of how are we driving this year compared to budget, compared to the previous two years, as far as how that ends, ends up the year. So the 2019 is a percent of budget expended, the 2018 and 2017 is a percent of the budget actually expended at the end of the year versus what's budgeted. In general, we see that we're trending a little bit lower in benefits, supplies and services, trending a little bit higher in equipment. A lot of that really evolves around the timing of purchases. So we don't see either one of those significantly out of line as far as impacting anything. And then looking at the second page, when we start to look at some of our other funds, community education is one of those driving factors where we had a transition last year. So we see a lower number booked in that. And then we see our revenue actually coming in higher than what it's been previously. Some of that does tie in with the levy dollars and how timing around that being booked, as well as some additional revenue coming in through the sources that way. And then the debt service in that revenue is also a factor of how things are recorded into books as far as the timing of levy dollars and those being recorded as well. So that's where we see that jump up here this year. It's a timing around how those are recognized that way. Those are kind of the things that we are looking at specifically. Internal service fund is another one that we're looking at in the bottom where it looks at expenditures. We're up slightly in our expenditures out of internal service fund. Our actual claims are only up about $300,000 in the area. So we don't see that as a significant impact. And some of that also has to do with the timing of payments in that area as well. So with that, this is just kind of a report. If you have any questions, we can certainly respond to those or look for additional information. Again, just trying to make sure that we maintain that integrity with our financial system.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Holgy?
Thank you.
Doesn't look like it. So move on to commendations for Mr. Rudowski.
All right. Commendations starting with our special education team. Aaron Levin, supervisor of the special ed program monitoring, congratulating Mary Pat Messler and the entire special ed team of no findings of non-compliance for record review or nothing out of compliance. She stated this represents a lot of work and we're very grateful for your efforts. Big congratulations from Ms. Levin. So very exciting for special education. Follow up from board member Brackian. Since she started something, we have a wide range of names to begin calling out at the board for the future. So the board last month, or last meeting, recognized Richfield Tap airs for their strong season culminating in qualifying for the state tournament in Class A Jazz Dance. Dedicated team has shown their talent, perseverance, and sportsmanship throughout the season and are so proud of having them represent Richfield Public Schools as one of the top teams in state. We also have a wide range of athletes that have qualified for state, and we are all, all very impressed with how they represent. Richfield Public Schools, our district and our community. In Alpine, we have Thomas Kimmis, boys swim and dive, James Bowers, Ray Har, Griffin Stainbrook, and Caleb Wilson. And divers, Eric Larson, and Abadnago Ghorshi. And then in wrestling, additional state qualifiers, Drake Elling- And then in wrestling, additional state qualifiers, Drake Elling, Vishal Manakaran, Juan Didios and John Hughes. So congratulations to all of those athletes, again, representing Richfield and showing true Spartan pride at the state level. Then we also have one congratulations and commendation to the Richfield Middle School team. And this is from parent Colleen Trundle. Wanted to take a moment to express her gratitude for a grade six grade trip to Eagle Bluff Environmental Learning Center. They feel so fortunate for continued RPS and RMS support of this amazing experience. I think it's a great time to myself speak out to the amazing dedication of the sixth grade team and the middle school team. So this is one of the most labor-intensive things that we do. And it's important that we recognize and acknowledge that information as a board to fundraise for an Eagle Bluff trip. But also, our staff are taking their days and their nights spending that entire week with students. And so these are staff that are going way above and beyond. And the more we can support and the more we acknowledge, that is a positive for the middle school team and something for us to all keep in mind.
Seconded on that, and I can't remember if I mentioned this publicly or not. I know I think I mentioned it to Mr. Hiddick, but I was very pleased earlier this year when I was listening to the radio and hearing a report about sort of cutting-edge work on developing social motivational skills among middle schoolers, et cetera. And the illustration of that cutting-edge work was exactly this type of experience that our sixth graders have had the opportunity to do for decades now. So I think it really is testimony to the hard work and the foresight and the dedication of our sixth grade teachers.
I would second the dedication of the teachers as a parent that has volunteered on the turn. It is an exhausting stretch of time. You're up and out before seven and you are none of that. 1:30 and you go the whole day. Throughout the middle school kids, it's a great experience, but it is exhausting.
Thank you. So the next item is approval of the consent agenda, which contains routine business items that the board approves at each meeting. As always, if there is an item that a member would like to request be removed for individual consideration, now is the time to request that. Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second.
So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mr. Ashmead and a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. We move into the old business section of the agenda where we have several items related to two policies that we have been discussing for a good number of weeks and months now before us. For both, I believe it is fair and accurate to say we do not intend to take action this evening, but instead are going to continue our conversation and process of hearing updates from the superintendent and staff, along with any additional questions or comments from the board. So first up is board policy 547, student dress.
All right. So board policy 547 and 547-1, student dress and guidelines. And just as a reminder, so this is a clean copy for the board. And so each of the next two policies, we're not moving for passage at this time. These are just clean copies so we can see them without all the red lines, without all the changes that we have now read multiple times. Each of the next two policies are going back to their respective committees prior to coming back a final time. And so 547, dress. We are gathering some additional parent input and information, and so that's going out to all the schools to try to gather some additional information there. And the Safe and Supportive Schools Group is going to be looking at this one last time. And so what you see before you is a clean policy at this time, which has, which outlines what is appropriate in terms of dress and appearance within our schools, and then also the guidelines that will go with that. It also outlines that there are uniforms at Richfield Dual Language School. It updates things with regard to our gender inclusion policy. It also adds a significant amount of student voice in regard to how these came to pass. So with that, I'm just sharing with you again as an FYI for information, those dress and guidelines. Do take one second to last again.
Can you please remind us the makeup of the Safe and Supportive Schools Group? I know there is a number of students. Is that correct?
Students, staff and parents. And I think part of our goal of going back out is because we've had some weather that has sort of shrunk that group. But Dr. Clarkson?
The Safe and Supportive Schools Committee is made up of teachers, administrators, parents at, and board members in the evening. And then we have a student, high school student group that reviews all of the feedback. And then it also goes to a technical committee that's made up of administrators from each building. So it goes through multiple revisions. And it also goes to Ed Richmond.
The student group meets during the school day, which I believe we found was the most effective way to get student participation along with lunch. And I believe there's anywhere usually from 15 to 20 students present that represent all grades and a wide range of student identities.
It goes back to them tomorrow.
Any other questions about 547? Okay. We will move on to board policy 979 and the associated administrative guidelines related to community use of school facilities and grounds.
All right. So this reflects the guidelines and fees and categorization of groups who are able to utilize our school facilities and grounds. As a reminder, this used to have 979, which is community use of schools and facilities, 979-1 and 979-2. 979-2 covered grounds, 979-1 covered facilities. To try to realign, we have actually integrated and synthesized all of these together and to try to make it a much cleaner copy for us to go with. And so you will now see, again, a clean copy, community use of school facilities and grounds, which talks about how do we categorize which groups get to use it. So priority order usage, which also aligns to fees, which then integrates those specific charges into our work. As a reminder, there are several questions still to be answered. We are going back and working through our athletic extracurricular advisory, which meets the Wednesday before this board, next board meeting. And so we will work to finalize and clean that up before coming back through to this group. And so you have before you that clean copy with everything synthesized and red lines down so we can see what it will look like with probably some minor changes and addition before, before two weeks from today.
Questions or comments? And as people who follow our meetings know, we have talked about this one of last over Trying to give people think time.
But only there's one little piece. This would be, I think this is on the guideline as opposed to the policy. Sorry.
And just as a reminder, we've updated and synthesized, there is no longer a guideline that is based on the best practices of some of our colleague districts. They are now integrated.
This would be section four D. So we're down to, it's after the fee schedules, talking about that an employee must be in whatever facilities or in youth categories three through five. So I was looking at, knowing that category one is basically Richfield Public Schools entities or groups. And I was curious, so what's category two? Category two is Richfield-based youth organizations.
Youth organizations and activities.
Yeah. I guess I was, I mean, I'm just curious. I feel like the custodian is frequently a very helpful thing to present during those.
So we have required and recommended it really depends. The reason we don't always have a custodian when it is Richfield Public Schools or City of Richfield is that sometimes it is our employee, our teacher who is that coach. And so we don't necessarily have to pay at that time a person to be there. With regard to the youth organizations, there are significantly, significant numbers that actually are similar cases. And so we can ask them to have one, but we absolutely require a category three through five. I will have extracurricular, just walk through that, just as a question, just to make sure we're all on the same page.
Have the larger user groups been made aware that this is edging towards final?
The boosters have had this information shared and people with the athletic extracurricular have been tasked with taking that out to their overall group. So I can't guarantee everyone has seen it. We've also, based on the recommendation, one of the reasons we're trying, we're moving it at this time rather than we brought it in the fall is that the fee change and things like that would be implemented in the fall of next year. And people are doing their budgets now. And so our extracurricular advisory talked to us about how imperative it is we make this decision now so that people can plan their fees and their participation based on the changes in the conversation that we have now.
Thank you. See no other questions or comments? We will move into the new business section of our meeting. We have four new business items before us this evening for the first time. Two are related to staffing for the 2019-2020 school year and two are related to our capital facilities project. So we are going to start first with the resolution to discontinue teaching positions for the 2019-2020 school year. And our chief human resources officer, Mr. Holgy, is going to introduce that.
Thank you. And you have before you a request to reduce our certified teaching positions by 30.16 FTE. Really, the bulk of this is tied in with our right sizing of the district as we're looking at enrollment reductions this year as well as enrollment reductions for next year. Most of this really is tied with that. One of the things just I want to point out as we're initiating this, is we've worked hard to make sure that that commitment to reducing our class sizes as part of the referendum is upheld with this. And so these reductions brought forth really line up with where our average staffing was intended for this current year with target class sizes that line up with that reduction of two FTEs across the board in those areas. So holding true to that target class size is one of the factors that we tied in with this. Additional reductions are included, which address categorical funding reductions, compensatory funds, the pre-kindergarten funding program where the state has reduced that program for next year and left it up to the legislature to bring that back. And so regular right-size that back to the first year of what our program was, as well as other adjustments in federal programs and other categorical funds in those areas. The adjustments really also provide for fluctuations in class sizes, grade levels, as well as registration. And we anticipate that as a number of these things come into place, as far as student registrations at high school, of course, interest and things like that, that a number of these positions will be added back to right-size in those areas as well. So with that, there's 1.0 FTE in administrative reductions, 23.32 FTE reduction in our elementary and secondary teaching positions, and then 5.84 in our special programs, which include our special education and those that are in the K-12 program across the district. So we ask for your approval tonight. This helps us initiate our processes that are required in the state statute and our contract for reductions in continuing contract teachers, which will follow a process that will highlight in the next board agenda as well.
Thank you, Mr. Holgy. Questions, comments?
When you say right sizing, I think just for specifics, the main source of that is we were down in student count this year by a significant number, and we have projections next year to be down.
Probably at the same trend.
Follow that same trend or even more.
So this right sizing, it's really two years of right sizing because we anticipate more students coming in for this current year. So we had set target class sizes that way, which in some cases is even lower. So it's using that staffing ratio that was intended for this year and the next year's ratio as well.
And so the other components of adjusting and then the funding is we have an assumption about how our inflow comes in from the state and how that will be adjusted, which remains to be seen how it will, correct? I mean, so that's part of the wait and see.
So there are a variety of factors as far as what the state approves for revenue. So it's, we base our revenue based on our projected enrollment. And so based on that enrollment, we project what our revenue is going to be because so much of ours is driven that way. The other factor that's tied in is we do know what our compensatory funds are going to be next year, and that's the area that we saw $700,000 reduction, which I think we've talked about a couple other times about that reduction with fewer students or fewer families qualifying for free reduced lunch then drives into fewer dollars for the district. That results in a $700,000 change for this year.
We have talked a lot as a board and I think as a district and community about the importance of us having a strong and diverse teaching force. And so you mentioned the process that we'll be going through over the next month and really several months as we have to make these very difficult decisions. So can you talk about how, as the process goes underway, we'll be able to stay centered on the importance of having a strong and diverse, strong and diverse teaching force in our schools?
Yeah. I think one of the things that we do, we work as a district, work in our buildings as far as who selects the positions. We have a variety of programs as far as teacher evaluations and criteria that we're looking at the teachers. And then really work hand in hand with district level as well as building level of leadership in making sure that we have the right team in place to make sure we're serving the students in the organization. So that's much of the work that takes place between now and the end of the school year or in May when we're in rate probation renewals. Clearly, we have brought in some top quality teachers and it's really difficult for me to come and present a reduction of 30 FTEs. So we have high quality staff across the organizations, making sure that those that we are keeping, really, we have that kind of incident, continuing to be able to be successful. These position reductions, and the next item, we really talked about the fact that in many cases, it doesn't impact the person, but it is just a matter of the economics of an organization that has changes in enrollment and things like that, as well as funding changes that occur from state federal sources too.
It is still a very personal decision.
Absolutely.
Other comments or questions? If not, we could entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented. Sorry.
I will move the resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented by Mr. Paulus and a second by Ms. Malik. Since this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Paulus?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Tenzin?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution is approved. Next, we have a resolution to discontinue teaching contracts and place teachers on unrequested leave of absence. So again, Mr. Holgy.
And there's a little finesse to this word. There's a resolution proposing to discontinue teaching contracts.
Proposing, thank you.
And this is really kind of a three-step process. So tonight, we're asking for action that would propose placing teachers on, or proposing to discontinue teaching contracts and place teachers on unrequested leave of absence. This initiates a communication to those individual teachers and then their opportunity to indicate whether or not they intend to bump into a different license area or different position. We also see that there are some opportunities for making some of these changes during this month. In April, we bring back another agenda item, sometimes with the same names and the same positions, where you are actually placing them on unrequested leave of absence based on the results of any bumping that might take place during this year or other things coming forth. And then in May and June is when we do probationary non-renewals that are impacted by those position reductions as well. So that's kind of our three-step process. When we look at the impact on continuing contract teachers, the fortunate piece that we have with 30 FTEs that are being reduced, we have three individuals that are being proposed for discontinues of teaching contracts. They represent individuals within the art and music area. We also anticipate that we have positions that are available for them in part-time positions right now. And we're also looking to see how we can combine positions across different buildings to hopefully keep individuals full in those areas. But there's some scheduling areas and things like that that we're still needing to work on to see how that would play out. So we're hopeful that these individuals will be able to continue with the district or at least have that opportunity in different positions. But for tonight's purposes, we do need to bring those to board and ask for your approval here tonight. One other piece that I would just kind of indicate, and we talked about this in the past, you know, this is a matter of economics. So it is no indication of the performance of these individuals or anything else like that as part of that process. And the other item, just to mention, there are three separate resolutions, but I believe that the board can act on those three simultaneously unless individual board members would like to pull one out of that or not. But it proposes to place a ULA for Rachel Edstrom, Naomi Hansen, and it just lost the last page, Chris Swanson.
Thank you. And thank you for explaining the multi-step process that is part of this. That's very helpful.
I think it's also important to note, even though he identified a couple of curricular areas, if you look at the overall reduction, as we reduce classrooms, we also reduce specialists that go along with that. And there are no ends of any department by any stretch of the imagination. There are small reductions across a wide range of curricular areas. So a small reduction in art, a small reduction in music, a small reduction in PE, a small reduction in Spanish. We are dedicated and will continue on with our strong programming and our whole child programming across our organization. And so rather than discontinuing a program, so to speak, we are right sizing similarly with these special programs and these additional curricular areas to make sure that we continue on that strong programming in all of our areas. to make sure that we continue on that strong programming in all of our areas.
Thank you.
And just to repeat, I think you'd said this already, but the reduction of 30.16 positions, are these three individuals are contemplated within that? This isn't on top of it?
Yeah, these three individuals are within those position reductions. These are the three teachers that are continuing contract teachers that we would anticipate their contract would have to be reduced or eliminated because of those position reductions.
Does anyone have a strong feeling about taking an individually or in bulk?
I was going to move that we address the resolution in bulk.
I would second that.
Is that a formal motion and a formal second then?
It is.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to approve the resolutions together by Mr. Tenzing and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Certainly opportunity for further discussion if there's more comments that people would like to make. I think just echoing, this is unfortunately a decision driven by economics and is always extremely painful for us as a board to have to do. Okay, as this is a resolution, I will pull the board. Cole?
Aye.
Tenzing?
Aye.
Ashmead?
Aye.
Malik?
Aye.
Paulus?
Aye.
The chair votes aye and the resolution is approved. Mr. Holgy, I think you just get to stay up there. So we next have a bid award for asbestos removal at Richfield STEM School.
Correct, thank you. So on February 25th, we received bids for the asbestos abatement at Richfield STEM School. We had four organizations that responded to it. And it is our recommendation that we award lump sum-based bid to Mabo Systems. There's actually a typo in this, it should be $183,300. And then lump sum-based bid to Echo Midwest of $186,000 for the project two. It basically is different areas within STEM School. Because of the scope of that asbestos abatement project and timing, we split it out into different proposals, which we saw increased the bid competitiveness and the opportunities within it. And some of the contractors actually preferred to only have one part of that project so that they could have the staffing to be able to ensure that they could maintain that within those areas. The total range for one was 183,300 up to 342,550. And the spread for the lump sum base two was 186,000 up to $360,000. So really some competitive proposals and by splitting this, we see a good opportunity to get this worked on. Both of these contractors are groups that have worked with, are partners in the past, and we anticipate we'll be successful in this one.
Questions or comments?
So Craig and I discussed earlier, I have some questions about some of the, they're required to let us know if there were OSHA violations. So there's some listed in there, they're not specific. But Craig and I discussed that that is not an uncommon thing, but that they would look into what those specific things were. And our group that monitors it will be following up and would monitor it as the work progressed.
And then I'm quickly searching the internet, looking for some of those things. So one of them that we found was a notification piece. So there's one where it shows, I forget how to phrase it, the initial, there was an initial penalty, but then there was no current penalty. As Andy mentioned, that's one where OSHA shows up and asks one of the workers for where's your chemical hygiene records? And they don't know. And so they get that initial penalty, then they find out that it actually was housed within a different part of the, different areas, stuff like that. So those are some things that we will continue to follow up and make sure that they're addressed. And we don't need to state that there are these specific concerns. On one of the contractors, the OSHA violations were in 2013 and 2014. So the only ones that they were reporting in those areas. And then the other thing we noted is that there was only one of those that was from a Minnesota location and the other was from Iowa locations, and that Minnesota location had zero violations. So, you know, just to deeper dive into that look too, we did kind of reduce some of our concerns or some of the concerns that way as well.
Yeah, so thank you for that.
Craig, also, just to clarify, with a lot of constructions scheduled in each of our buildings, this project enables it, does not get in the way, is necessary to do ahead of time?
It's coordinated as part of it. So the asbestos abatement typically is carved out from the larger contractor projects that have either been already awarded or that we will be awarding later on tonight. But Andy and the ICS team works hand in hand to make sure that those are staged appropriately as per the process.
Are the funding sources different as well?
I think this is all coming out of that construction project. There is a potential to use some LTFM dollars for some of these projects, but at right now, we're funding use that construction budget. Those are part of the bond, the board group reference bond.
And there's not a separate opportunity or revenue stream for asbestos abatement?
There is through some of the LTFM options, and we're looking at that and how this project fits within that larger LTFM budget. Right now, we feel like these resources would be available within the capital project. If we need to, we could move some of our LTFM funds that are part of that levy into this. But we have other options to do that too.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, we could entertain a motion to approve the bid award for our staff.
We can rule of the bid award for our STEM.
So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid award is granted. And then finally, we have a bid award for additions and renovations at Richfield High School.
Yes, and this is the last of the three large building construction bid awards that we have as part of this season, this summer's project. And on February 26th, we received four bids as part of this project. And our recommendation is that we approve the bid award with LS Black Constructors Incorporated for $31,392,000. And we have also a request to include alternates one, two, and three, which are adjustments to the loading dock, renovations of areas E and F, which are the lower gym areas, as well as the window in the cafeteria area for a total bid of $35,430,000. In this area, we had four different groups respond to that as well. LS Black came in with a total of $35,430,000. The high bid was $37,817,000. So one of the larger spreads that we spent some time digging into to make sure that are these numbers really true and really held strong. As Andy and his team did some initial investigation working with LS Black, it appears that some subcontractors had provided some inaccurate information to some of the individuals that was maybe limited. And LS Black did a deeper dive and analysis on that that anticipate that those expenditures were a lot higher than what they were going to be needing to do. And so we were able to benefit from that. But LS Black is confident in their numbers and being able to bring that forward. And we're confident that they'll be able to be an effective partner. They are also one of, they are also the individual that was awarded the bid for RVLS. And so they'll be working on a couple of different projects within Richfield Schools as well. This project did come in slightly over budget with $1.7 million. But one of the things that we've done is we've looked at what our interest revenue is coming in from our bonds. And we've seen significantly more money in that area that we think will be able to cover some of these additional expenditures for some of these projects that have come in over budget. We also have seen some additional numbers coming in with our commissioning as well as with the asbestos. It gives us a good baseline of where our future projects in those areas are going to be coming in as well. And with that, we really are working to maintain a proportional share of contingency dollars is what we've already spent on our current projects. So after this, these three projects are completed, we will have completed about 58% of our projects. And at this point, we haven't used more than that 58% of our contingency revenue and are able to kind of pull that back. And so trying to be cognizant of the fact that we still have four other buildings that are coming online and making sure that we have similar opportunities for those that we don't, pulling away from what those projects would likely be. But I will knock on wood at that point too, just because that's part of what I do. So with that, we ask for your approval of that bid award to LS Black, including the base bid as well as alternates one, two, and three for a total project of $35,430,000.
Thank you. Questions?
I just want to say thanks for clarifying those areas. I had questions about where this was, where I led up the budget and how the contingency was being monitored throughout, what the impact would be on subsequent projects. So thank you for clarifying that. I'll move that we accept the bid as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Tenzing. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the bid award is granted.
Thank you.
So moving into the final stage of our meeting agenda, advanced planning. As always, we'll begin with a legislative update from Superintendent Unoski or other board members who have things they'd like to share.
Big news is obviously the governor finalized his budget and revenue projections. Coming out with a revenue projection of $492 million lower than was previously expected. That is the negative side. On the positive side, he indicated that he had anticipated that when he came out with his budget to start with. And so he is not anticipating making large changes to his budgetary projections, which as we recall, was a 3% increase in the first year and 2% increase on the general formula. And then some of those other areas like holding special education cross-subsidy solid and refunding in the voluntary pre-K. Those are areas that we are not counting on at this time because there is obviously that long conversation that will occur in the legislature over the next set of months. But we are cautiously optimistic that things will continue to go in a positive way at the capital. And we are counting on and hoping for the governor's support as he continues to discuss his longtime support for schools.
I will provide the update. From a policy perspective, there is one particular item that AMSD is monitoring that would represent a new mandate on our high school, I believe. Yes, I believe it would be our high school. And this is the introduction of a graduation requirement for at least a half credit and maybe more in civics. And the Senate bill requires, I believe additionally, that that course be taken during the junior year. Whereas I believe the House bill has flexibility on that. And so this is something that has, this particular mandate has been brought forward before and has failed to pass. We will see where it goes in terms of that piece.
As a follow-up to that, newly elected Congressman Dean Phillips held a conversation with superintendents. He also reiterated that statement around civics. I think the superintendents were in unison that it wouldn't be great to have a new unfunded mandate and anything that required a specific test or a graduation requirement isn't something we would specifically speak to. While we all did feel the importance of civics is one of those curricular areas that we do see value in. It would just be another scenario of an unfunded mandate unless there was some amount of time or dollars that came with this particular conversation.
So that's one observation. The other observation is we did hear from Representative Dave Pinto, who I believe represents St. Paul, who is personally quite active in the birth through three side of pre-K. And that led to an opportunity for me to do some thinking about what, you know, thinking not only about how important that particular age group, age range is. Representative Pinto was reflecting on the development of gaps, if we want to talk about racially predictable gaps, that we see the development of those gaps occurring at very young ages, you know, before the first year of life. With the thought being that the sooner we can offer support and services to even these very, very young children who might be at increased risk, the sooner we can mitigate those gaps forming such that before they even get to us as four-year-olds, we've hopefully already had a chance to mitigate that. Had a chance to ask Dr. Roby informally sort of what we were doing in birth through three. And I guess I was going to request, this is a little bit jumping ahead, but I thought that to talk to me about what opportunities we might have in birth through three and what we're doing now would be something that I'd be interested to hear about in the future.
So we will put in early childhood, specifically birth through three updates?
Yeah. I think that, you know, the importance of ECFD certainly was mentioned. I'd love to see us figuring out ways that we can collaborate more with local healthcare providers in terms of just marketing ECFD to these young families as they're walking through the door for that first well child visit with their two-week-old baby. I think that's the time to get these, get these families engaged. So that's what I've got.
And then legislative-related items. Okay, then we can transition into just general information or questions from the board?
I will be absent. The next meeting, the 18th, will be on hold.
Have a good trip.
Thank you.
Seeing no others, that's a great transition. So as John just said, the next meeting will be on the 18th. Will feature opportunity for public comment, the presentation from our Richfield High School team, and as is currently scheduled, the presentation from our nutrition services team. And then I also wanted to note, the first meeting in April is not on the traditional first Monday of the month. It's actually on Monday, April 8th, I believe due to spring break.
Spring break.
So just wanted to make sure that that's in people's minds in case you have an automatic calendar setting for the first Monday of the month, that would be incorrect.
Is the second meeting the fourth Monday then?
I believe it is still the third.
I can look it up, don't worry.
Okay. I didn't look that far ahead. Any additional items other than the one that Peter already shared, request for future meetings?
While you do that, it is actually set for the 8th and then the one after is set for the 22nd, the 4th.
Oh.
Because then the next one is still a couple of weeks out with it being based next. So it's the April meetings are the 8th, April 8th, and April 22nd.
Thank you.
I had just brought up to Superintendent Unoski earlier, noticing that our strategic plan is approaching expiration. Is that what you would say? But that we should probably start basically asking if we have anything in progress to start planning. Does it end at the end of 2020?
It ends at the end of the 2020 school year. So part of our work next year, probably winter and spring, will be a review and what are those next steps to revitalize and renew our strategic plan, look at the things that we're doing, determine which things we want to continue doing, and then take that long-term view out for the next five years to look at what are those things that we really want to be planning towards at that point. So definitely one of our, as we talked about with our education Richfield partners and all of our partners across the schools, next year will be one where we do participate in the strategic planning process.
Okay, one last note before we could entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you to everybody for joining us and being here with us this evening. It's always great to have people in the audience. So seeing no other items of business, we could entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Tenzing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the meeting is adjourned at 8:30 PM.